All right, I will call to order the May 19th, 2020 meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to welcome and swear in Andrew Gay. So, Mr. Gay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Gay.
I, Andrew Gay.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of a member of the Planning Commission upon which I am about to enter.
A member of the Planning Commission of which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Welcome to our Arvada Planning Commission. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Andrew Gay.
Present.
Michael P. Griffith.
Here.
T.O. Owens.
Here.
Patricia Connell.
Here.
Doug McGee.
Here.
Steve Hannan.
Here.
Michael McCarron. Thank you.
All right, I move that we excuse Mr. McCarron, and we'll do that by a roll call vote. So, Ms. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Hannan?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Hi.
And Mr. Gay?
Yes.
And I am an I as well, so that passes six to zero. Mr. McCarron can have a nice birthday. The minutes for the March 3rd, 2020 meeting have been submitted for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No.
All right, the minutes, there being no corrections, the minutes stand approved as printed. We have no general business and no reports. And do we have anybody for petitions and communications? Josie, do we have anybody?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so we have no petitions or communications. So, the first public hearing. So, the public hearings tonight are Stinger Sports Complex Alternative Sign Program, the cottages at Ralston Fields, PDP, CP 2020-03 Resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada to amend the Comprehensive Plan 2014 to incorporate revisions related to the Land Development Code. And we have a remapping, a section of Alchire Street, north and west of 80th Avenue on the city of the zoning, City of Arvada zoning map dated June 1, 2020. That is in conjunction with the Land Development Code 2020 and the Comprehensive Plan. At this time, I'd like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. After the presentation, public comment will be given, and each member of the public that is registered to provide comment will make their comments, and then they will be moved back as an attendee where you will only be able to listen to the meeting. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all testimony has been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed and questions will be taken from the Planning Commission. And all applicants and members of the public have already been sworn in, so I don't need to do that. Now, we'll open the public hearing with the Stinger Sports Complex Alternative Sign Program generally located at 11200 West 58. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, three forms of notice were required. Staff published notice in the paper, and the mailing affidavit and posting log are both in order.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Staff, are there any additional items that have been received and will be made a permanent part of the record?
There are no additional items.
Thank you. Let's see, the following items have been submitted and will be made a permanent part of the record: the staff report, posting log, and mailing affidavit. Mr. Moore, do you have an introduction to the project?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The Apex Park and Recreation District, in conjunction with the Sea of Arvada, are requesting approval of an alternative sign program for an internally illuminated electronic message monument sign at the Quail Street entrance of the Stinger Sports Complex. The joint identification sign is intended to be the first project in a planned Phase II co-branding effort for Apex Park and Recreation District to partner with the City of Arvada in the updating and rebranding of certain park facilities within the city. The proposed monument sign is approximately 13 feet in height by nine feet wide for a total area of approximately 111 square feet. The location, dimensions, and design represent a mutually agreed co-branding effort between the city and Apex.
Do I start now?
So, I'm supposed to say, is there a representative from the applicant present?
Yes.
Awesome. You weren't highlighted, though. It says I should wait. Please state your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Katie Groke. I'm the Marketing and Communications Director at the Apex Park and Recreation District. My last name is spelled G-R-O-K-E, and I'm not sure what address to use.
Typically, your home address, but we don't care.
All right, my home address is 15516 West 64th Loop, Arvada, Colorado 8007.
Great.
All right, please tell us about your case.
So, just to give a quick background on the partnership between Apex and the City of Arvada, we, for years, have been partnered on the green spaces that Arvada owns and Apex permits. And we've tiered, we have a tiered structure of the fields. Tier one being more tournament-ready fields, which include Lutz Sports Complex, Stanger Sports Complex, and Long Lake Ranch. Tier two are smaller facilities that can still have game, official games played on them, but might not have lighting or other amenities like Pioneer Park, Memorial Park, and those sorts of things. And then Tier three parks are the general parks that might not have sport amenities like goals or dirt for baseball, but can still be permitted for practice use. Because when Apex went through our recent rebrand in 2017, it became apparent to us that we needed a more professional sign external signage program. And part of the end of that process was really taking a look at our fields. So, we are now, I think, fully through our rebrand as it relates to external signage. And so, we approached the city about better branding and co-branding the fields in which the city owns, but Apex permits. Stanger being our priority because until the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we did have some relatively large, high-profile events scheduled at Stanger, including an international rugby tournament, which has now been postponed. But, and in order to start attracting larger, higher-profile events to bring a revenue stream into the city because of the visitor and the visitor traffic, we needed to better brand Stanger and have it more informative and inviting for those events. So, if you go to the next slide, I don't know if you all have driven by Stanger recently, but the Stanger is at the intersection of 58th and Quail, as you can see. So, that's the entire complex just west of Lutz and our Apex Fieldhouse. If anyone has any questions about what Stanger is, let me know. But, we are trying to transition Stanger and permit Stanger to be more multi-sport usage and not just soccer. And if you've driven by Stanger in recent years, the sign out front actually makes it maybe seem like the Edge Soccer Club owns the complex and not the public entities. And that gets really confusing. Even though we have a great relationship with Edge, people don't, like other entities, don't think that they can permit and use Stanger. And the purpose of Stanger is to be a more community usable field for all sports and other events. Next slide. So, this is the current sign. It doesn't really have any city branding, and nowhere does it say, "Call Apex to Permit", which really does get us into, I wouldn't say trouble, but it does get confusing for people who want to permit or who want to use it. And we really don't have any way of letting them know that they have to do that through Apex and the proper channels. Next slide. So, this is the proposed signage. If you can eliminate the big soccer balls, use your imagination. We worked really closely with Ben Irwin and the communications team at the city to approve this design. So, they have approved the branding and the signage design. It's a watch fire electronic bulletin that we can control and can offer to the events that do permit the field. We can specialize that to those users. So, for example, if the rugby tournament had happened, we could have, you know, said, "Welcome, Golden Oldies Rugby Tournament", and just kind of made them feel more inviting to their event and start attracting other events to do so. Next slide. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Hey. So, the operations plan will be that the sign will be turned off by 10:00 PM or the closing of the Apex Fieldhouse, whichever is earlier. The Apex Fieldhouse is usually open and has programming through midnight. The last soccer game that's played during our adult leagues is 11:00 PM. So, it would be turned off before the Apex Center or the Apex Fieldhouse would close. Or if we were to close prior to 10:00 PM, we would close it before leaving. Between sunset and when the sign is turned off, the Sign Electronic Message Center would not exceed 250 NIT, I can never pronounce it, or 23.23-foot candles. The same technology that we're using with this sign is the same technology that we've used at the other Apex facilities during our signage program. So, if you've seen the new sign at the Sim Street Recreation Center, Fitzmorris Recreation Center, or, I mean, all of them, Sim Street, Fitzmorris, the Community Recreation Center, all of the new Apex signage uses the same watch fire technology. The external illumination of the sign shall not exceed 250 lux of illuminance. And the watch fire displays have a photocell to measure the ambient light and control the brightness to .3-foot candles over ambient light, which is an industry standard. And just, I should have maybe mentioned this at the beginning, we are contracting with a company called Adcon, who I believe is on this meeting, and they are also who did our other signage. So, we have a relationship with them, and we've been happy with the product that they've done for our other signage. Next slide. Any questions?
I suspect we'll have some when we get there, which is pretty quick.
Okay.
All right. So, Josie, we don't have anybody signed up to speak, right? Josie?
I think she answered that question yes earlier, so.
Good.
We're good.
So, then we can open the public comment, but then we'll close the public comment because we have no public, no need for rebuttal. So, at this time, we'll close the public input portion of the hearing and invite questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission. Anyone? Hold on, I'm having a hard time seeing the raised hands, so. We'll get there. Who would like to speak? Just raise your hand, wave at me a little bit. All right, Mr. Gay?
Yeah, simple question. Just curious how the sign is powered. Is it solar panel or is it connected to one of the utility lights?
We have currently, we have, like, I don't, Jonathan might be able to, need to help me with this, but, because I don't see if that Rick is on the call. But, we currently have electricity out to that site in the ground because of the current lighting, so we can tap into the current electricity. And we do have the proper paperwork together for the electrician that will be subcontracted to do that work. But, we're not cutting the electricity when we remove the old sign, the current sign.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? I don't see anybody with a hand raised, and I don't see, I don't see anybody waving furiously at me. So, if there's no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Chair. I motion that D. 2020-0020 Stanger Sports Complex Alternative Sign Program located at 11200 West 58th Avenue be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages four and five of the staffing report.
All right, the motion is for approval. Any discussion of that motion? Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, just a comment, the good-looking sign, it's going to have a lot of additional information. And I did want to comment on the co-branding with the city and Apex Park and Recreation District. This is another enhancement of the partnership between these two entities that 25 years ago could barely talk to each other. And now, they partner with equipment and sites. And so, I just wanted to say that this is a good enhancement to that partnership that keeps growing and is a big benefit to the city of Arvada and Apex residents.
Am I able to comment back to add something or no?
Sure.
I should have mentioned this earlier, so thank you so much for mentioning that, that this would, this would also, by the end of, and now I have no idea what the timeline will be because of the COVID-19 pandemic. But, once we are able to get signage up at all of the Tier One facilities, we do think that it will actually have a piece of public education that will be a positive unintended consequence of the program and making sure that the residents and the neighborhoods understand that we're working together and to really understand who to call if there's a problem or if they want a permit or things like that. So, an underlying kind of great unintended consequence of the situation is that we can better educate the community about how our two organizations work together in such a positive manner.
Good deal. Any other comments from the Planning Commission? No, I agree. I can support this. This is a, it's a nice sign. It's a beautiful part of our city, and we sure appreciate all the work that you do. So, with that, Mr. Griffith?
Hi.
Ms. Connell? Ms. Connell, we have to unmute yourself so we can hear you.
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Hannan?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Gay?
Hi.
Awesome. All right, and I am an I. So, that is six, six yeses and zero nos with Mr. McCarron being absent. So, that motion passes, and we'll recommend that to City Council for approval. Thank you for being here tonight. And we won't hold it against you if you leave.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you for taking the time tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the cottages at Ralston Fields Perimeter Development Plan generally located at 5810 Miller Street. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, three notification requirements were required. Staff published the notice in the paper. The applicant was responsible for the notification letter and the site posting. The posting log and affidavit of mailing are in order.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Not at this time.
Are there any additional items that have been received and will be made a permanent part of the record?
No.
Thank you. The following items have been submitted and will be made a permanent part of the record: the staff report, posting log, and mailing affidavit. Jake, do you have a brief of the case?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking your mask off.
The applicants are requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for the cottages at Ralston Fields, a residential development with 64 units on approximately 2.41 acres of land. The housing mix includes 24 single-family detached homes, 24 single-family attached townhome units, and 16 duplex units, over-under duplex units, to be specific. The development is located at the northeast corner of Miller and West 58th Avenue. Staff presents this, excuse me, case with a recommendation of approval subject to the condition in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions later.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Is there a representative of the applicant present? I don't see them.
Yes, yes, we're here.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Masters. Could you please give us your name, first name, last name, spell your last name for the record, and also give us your address?
Okay. Name is Tim Masters, M-A-S-T-E-R-S. Our offices are at 6990 West 38th Avenue in Wheat Ridge, Colorado.
Great. Please tell us about your case.
Great. We're excited about this case. We think this is a kind of a novel idea to some of the issues of affordable housing and attainable housing in Arvada. And on behalf of myself and my partner Jim Ellen, who is in the back of the room here, six feet away, we'd like to present our project tonight. Our proposal is really bringing back the missing middle housing that has, you know, that was around about the, you know, 1940s back in Arvada. We think it is, will bring the much-needed attainable housing option to the residents. We plan in doing this via pocket neighborhood land planning concept, which we feel will be one of the first such developments in the metro area. Basically, we're putting in small homes fronting an open space courtyard. Next slide, please. As you can see, the applicant prior to us was really apropos for this case. We're directly across the street from the main entrance of Lutz Sports Complex. We are in the Ralston Field Urban Renewal Area in what they call the nape of the dog, where the green circle up there. And the shape of the district is a dog. And so, we were very close to some of the new developments in the Ralston, in the Ralston Field Urban Renewal Area, like the Walmart Supercenter and the shops at Ralston Creek. We're just west of Kipling on 58th, and we're a short walk from those other developments. And we're approximately 3/4 of a mile or less from the Arvada Ridge Light Rail Station. Next slide, please. This is the view of the Lutz Sports Complex. We are the red circle in the top left corner, directly across from the main access to Lutz. And as mentioned by the previous applicant, over a million people per year drive right by our site. We view the site as Arvada's front door. It's a gateway to the city with a lot of people driving from outside the city to Lutz Field and Stanger Sports Complex. They have to drive right by our site, which is presently vacant, and we. Next slide, please. The site has been vacant before its annexation into the city some 65 years ago, which brings up the first question, why? I've driven by this site for over 15 years and wondered every time why this site was vacant. And the answer is, it currently stands as a virtually unbuildable site. 95% of the site is in the FEMA floodplain. A sewer transects the property, cutting the site in half. The old Van Bieber Channel prevents the site's frontage from being activated. And among other things, the site is in a split zone. All these issues make the site virtually untouchable to most developers, which, you know, brings up why did Jim and I buy it, and we're civil engineers, and we think we can do anything, so we went ahead and bought the site. Next slide, please. So, the real question is, besides why on earth did we buy the property, it's what's good about the site, and there's plenty of things. Top three things are location, location, location. The site is in easy walking distance of several stores, parks, and trails, surrounded by open space, has great access to I-70, the light rail stop at Arvada Ridge, and it's fairly close to Old Town. And best of all, it's in Arvada. And the Urban Land Institute's 2020 Emerging Trends publication, which just came out about two months ago, lists Arvada as Colorado's only cool suburb. And it's placing the site in the ideal location for hipsterbia. Next slide, please. One of the biggest issues that we feel in Arvada is the housing affordability. As the Arvada Press article shows in the right, housing prices now exceed home affordability. The average home price in Arvada is $470,000, and that far exceeds the maximum mortgage a family earning an average median income can afford. But, what's worse, the maximum mortgage that a one-person household can afford is literally less than half of the average home price in Arvada. Next slide. So, the question is, why is housing so unaffordable? And we point to the big houses as the root of the problem. As the graphic on the left shows, the 1950 average-sized house was 1,000 feet, 2,000, it was double that. And today, in 2020, it's closer to 3,000 square feet. At the same time, living space per person has more than doubled since the 1970s. And this upward trend in house size is reversed to the downward trend in occupancy size. Since 2000, in Arvada alone, there's been a 17% increase in one-person households. And according to the recent study by, I think it's called This Is Arvada, 26% of households in Arvada are single-person occupancy. This follows, falls in line with the U.S. Census, and they are predicting that this trend is only going to increase. In some areas of the country, such as our neighboring city of Denver, this is reaching 40% of the households are single. And with that in mind, the average sales price of a home in Arvada, coupled with the rise of single-person households, is virtually leaving a quarter of the city's population out of the for-sale housing market. Next slide, please. And as this article from the Wall Street Journal sums up the problem very succinctly, I mean, too many big houses are out there. With the average sales price of our Arvada home approaching $300 per square foot, the formula is fairly easy. The bigger the house, the more costly the house. Next slide. This is a very interesting slide for us. What do these two houses have in common? And one reason we think that there's a trend in larger house sizes is the development fees are a one-size-fits-all approach. These two houses are very different. Probably the master bedroom of the house on the left is the entire size or maybe even greater than the house on the right. The house on the right has exactly the same housing development fees as the house on the left. The development fees take up 24% of a 720-square-foot house and only 4% of a 4,000-square-foot house. So, what's happening is developers are left having to construct larger and larger homes to defray the cost and spread this cost of the impact fees throughout the house. And we believe this is the main reason why housing prices have grown disproportionately to the occupancy of the house. And it's virtually creating a missing middle of the housing stock. Next slide, please. Missing middle housing stock, just to sort of define it, was very popular in the 1940s. You can drive around Old Town Arvada, Wheat Ridge, Lakewood, all the surrounding cities, and you'll see these smaller houses, small duplexes, small multifamily buildings were all the norm. And since the 1950s, these house styles were basically abandoned in favor of ever-growing house sizes. And what many of the planners and affordable housing experts are finding is that this is bringing the housing stock back, back to the cities will help decrease the cost or help increase affordability. The little tidbit in the corner there in the box of the AARP says that middle-missing housing is a great choice to provide attainable housing options. Next slide, please. These communities are springing up from coast to coast. Cities are adjusting zoning and fee structures to promote smaller houses and. Cities are adjusting zoning and fee structures to promote smaller houses and pocket communities, you know, creating options for twenty-five percent of the population who needs a who doesn't need a or want a three thousand square foot home, nor can they afford them. These two projects, one's located on the West Coast and one's on the East Coast, are just typical examples. Next slide. These show that houses, you know, the same similar type of pocket neighborhoods in Arkansas and Indiana, so the South and the Midwest. Next slide. And these, next slide, please. Yeah. These show the, you know, the same thing in Washington. Just a couple of neighborhoods that that show a very strong sense of community within a larger community, and their attainable price point for many of the citizens to get into the for-sale housing market. Next slide. So what are we proposing? We're proposing a true pocket neighborhood. I think it'll be the first in Arvada. We're looking at sixty-four dwelling units composed of a mix of single-family duplex and row homes. The row homes will be three-story units with oversized garages tucked under. The other units will be two-story homes. They all range between seven hundred and twenty square feet and eight hundred square feet of living space. The duplexes are stacked. That way, the first floor can provide an accessible living space without stairs. At the sketch plan hearing, both council and planning commission would like to have seen, you know, these things being more ADA accessible, so approximately twenty percent of the site is ADA accessible with these duplex units like this. We're also considering the duplex units could be sold as an individual house, granting one owner about fourteen hundred and forty square feet if they desire that type of unit. Next slide, please. This is our site plan. It's laid out into four pocket neighborhoods, sixteen homes surrounding each pocket park or courtyard. Each one of these courtyards are different active zones. So we're going to be creating four different communities within the larger community. The concept is to place parking away from the street, so passersby do not see the parking lot from Fifty-Eighth. Additionally, the parking is very, very key to this type of development. You need to push the curb, the parking towards the rear of the site so that residents will be walking through their courtyard, from their car to the courtyard, and this promotes a better sense of connection with their neighbors within the courtyard. Other amenities will include a sort of the houses along the street. We're going to face forward along the street to create a sort of a residential fill along Fifty-Eighth. We're including a central delivery and recycling center at the entrance to the site. To, that helps to limit truck traffic throughout the site and throughout the drive aisles. Additionally, we've tried to transition the site between our property and the adjacent neighbors. For instance, we have the three-story buildings, the row homes strategically placed along the back of the site towards the north. That's for the, to transition the apartments behind us, which are of similar scale and mass. And along the east side of the property, there's a doctor's office, two offices adjacent to us. We put the largest parking aisle there, separating us from the nearest home is seventy feet from the property line. The offices, the doctor's offices, probably another seventy or eighty feet away from their property line, so we're a good hundred and fifty feet away from those offices. The three-story homes, we, again, we feel are the same mass and scale of the of the apartments behind us, but they also block the apartments viewing the courtyards, and we're creating these courtyards as a more community-oriented fill. The only face out towards the street will have some trees and have to kind of block the direct view in, but there's sort of greater a buffer between the front of the buildings and Fifty-Eighth. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, each courtyard will be programmed differently, and this is provide different zones for people who want different things. The gardens and the courtyard and, or the gardens courtyard and the gazebo courtyards will be more low-key, quieter areas. People just want to relax and chat. The fire pit courtyards and the games courtyard are a little bit more active for a little different person, whether you want to play pickleball or bocce ball or whatever, or, you know, horseshoes, that's up to you. Next court, or slide, please. We have some additional amenities. The pasels are the rear of the buildings. There's a small area between them. This is providing another layer of quiet, and if you want to get away from the active centers of the courtyards, one sits in the, and maybe chats with their neighbor in the pasel. The additional things we're doing is a central package delivery system. Packages will come to the front door of the site, dropped off. You'll have a computer access to get your package. Nobody is knocking on your front door or driving a truck through your neighborhood. And the community gardens to sort of provide everybody a place to plant tomato bush and such. Next slide. Along Fifty-Eighth, we, as I mentioned, we plan to make it a more residential look along what we consider to be the front door of Arvada. As mentioned by the Stanger presentation, over a million visitors per year visit the park, and the vast majority of them drive directly across our street in front of our building. So as you turn the corner from Kipling, you're looking directly at this site, and we feel this is a better view than the dirts and weeds that are there now. Next slide, please. This is the view from, that our homeowners will see from their front porches as a view across the courtyard. And each one will be very similar. We'll have different coloring schemes, maybe for each neighborhood that's up in the air, but it kind of like the bright and bold painted ladies look that you're seeing here. Next slide. So as noted, our footprints are fairly small. And as you can see from this table, about all over sixty-four homes take up the space of of eight average-sized homes that are being constructed in the city right now. So we have a small footprint. We consider large living. Next page, please. As you can see, the lot coverage, landscape coverage we're looking at is about thirty-one percent. We feel this is augmented by all the open space around us. There's a park right across the street from us that on Miller Street, and then there's the large complexes directly across the street with access to numerous trails throughout the neighborhood, throughout the area. Next slide, please. We're looking at a lot of community benefits that we think this comes. So in summary, we think the development is, you know, brings more benefits to the city than just our future residents. It provides a, you know, affordable housing option for the city, divides diversity in the current housing stock while maintaining, I think, Arvada's single-family fill. In addition, the development is a definite improvement to what we consider as Arvada's front door by the, by the sports fields. We feel that it's better than the current vacant property. And lastly, but not least, the development is green, it's affordable, and it's cool. We thank you, and we look forward to your comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Masters. I'm sure we'll have a few questions here in just a second. We don't have anybody sign up to speak, so we won't have a rebuttal. So at this time, I'll close the public input portion of the hearing and invite questions from members of the planning commission. Mr. Hannan has his hand raised.
Good. I actually figured I'd have to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions for the, one for the applicant, one for the city. One of your selling point features is green development. What type of green things are you building into this planned development?
Yeah, we're building in green simply by the fact that we're not consuming a ton of materials to build these structures. They're a third of the size of, actually, twenty-five percent of the size of an average home that's being built now, and that by itself is green. They're more energy efficient because they're smaller. We are doing two-by-six construction and six-inch bad insulation and that sort of stuff. You know, double-pane windows, all that sort of thing. But the very nature of these is the heating system will be very small. The amount of energy each unit will use is very small. We are looking at providing the option of all of these homes being solar-ready so that a person who buys them wants to hook up a system, they're not fooling around with, you know, changing their their outdoor electrical systems and so on and so forth.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that. For staff, parking on Miller Street on the west side, is that going to impact traffic in that area at all? I can see people deciding to park by the garden and cutting across gardens to get to their units.
There is on-street parking on Miller, so people could choose to park on Miller, whether that be guests or residents. And then they could choose to walk across. I believe in some of the plans, there was, and I don't know if if the applicants decide on this, there was, I believe, at some time, a small picket fence around the garden, so there could be measures put in place that would stop direct cut-through and encourage people to walk along the sidewalks. But there are no, there are no plans to make Miller no parking.
Thank you. I thought, I thought I had seen fences on the sketch development, and that's why I was wondering if they weren't on this one.
Yeah, I believe you are correct.
Last question for the developer. The houses that will front on Fifty-Eighth, as you mentioned, there's a significant amount of traffic on Fifty-Eighth. It might be, and you have oriented that purposely facing, which means lots of road noise. And double-pane windows are good, but triple-pane windows might be something to consider on those front-facing units. And that's my only comment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple, or a series of questions for Mr. Nichols of the staff about the the old Van Bieber Creek channel. Does that ever have water in it? I mean, this would be the time of year when I guess it would have any water, or is that? Is it blocked? Tell me a little bit about what the status is of that channel that goes through this site.
Yes, I will just tell you, it is only collecting local flows from this property and just from a little bit upstream, to the point where after it was diverted south of Fifty-Eighth. And the applicants will be able to answer that with much more precision, precision than I can. So if they would like to jump in, that would be great.
Sure. The entire flow for Van Bieber has been diverted to the south of Fifty-Eighth, and as Jake said, it's only local flow, basically base flow upstream of a very small area, to the point where urban drainage is not even going to review our our drawings on the, to fill it in, because they don't consider it part of their system. We have filed officially a letter of map revision. The site is actually technically out of the floodplain, even though it shows up in the floodplain in the FEMA map. The site is about eight feet taller than the adjacent building that is on the property next to us that is currently out of the floodplain, so someone botched that FEMA map. So we filed a LOMAR two weeks ago with FEMA and the city. And we're processing, assessing through that right now. We will, our plans are to fill in the channel and to divert the off-site flow in a pipe through the existing two box covers, one on Miller, one underneath Fifty-Eighth, just to carry on the upstream flow.
And then you build a detention, a small detention facility on the west side of Miller?
Yeah, that would make sense, and we actually suggested that upfront, but what we did is a hydrograph to prove that the flow of water from our site actually hits the peak flow of Van Bieber Creek nine hours after the rainstorm starts. So, yeah, so, so we've submitted to the city saying that the runoff from our site, because we're really directly on the channel, we're just across the street, doesn't impact the peak flow and therefore detention. According to city code, it can be waived in this case. We are providing water quality all along the front and back of the property.
Okay, well, so another question for you, Mr. Masters. So you've mentioned a couple of times that this is attainable, you know, it's a pocket housing, a different type of housing type within the city, which is good. I generally like what you're, you've come up with. So I know it's preliminary. Do you have a range of prices that you can, at least what might be the low point, what might be a high point? I don't need them by the type of facility, but you have any idea what the the cost might be for these, what the selling price might be?
Our goal for the, the single-family or the duplex is in the neighborhood of two fifty to three hundred, depending on if someone wants gold-plated fixtures versus chrome. The garage units will be slightly more, just because they contain a garage. Our goal is really to keep these things as inexpensively as possible. So, you know, we're looking at interiors, luxury vinyl tile as the, as the base, which is being used actually as all the luxury hotel, or places in downtown Denver. But we're looking at that as an option, carpeting on the upstairs, you know, rather than wood floors, that sort of thing. If someone wants wood floors, they can certainly, you know, ask for them. And go, but the idea is this to go very simple. These, we're trying to create more of a community than a toss-mahol inside each unit. So yes, we're looking at trying to keep them sub-three hundred.
Okay, sounds good. So just a couple of questions about the detail, and my fellow commissioner Hannan mentioned the fencing. Is there a privacy fence with masonry post that surrounds this site on the north and on the east side?
On the north, there's an existing privacy fence. We're working with the owners of the property. It's actually set about two to three feet off of our property. We're working with the owners of that property where we would be granted an easement to maintain that, that gap between the properties. And, you know, share in whatever expense in updating the current existing fencing there. Along the east side of the property, which is the medical center, we are looking at the, at the fence you've described, which is a six-foot privacy fence with a column, masonry column, three or four of those along that fence line.
Okay, and one just final detail, and I'm assuming that the pasels are where the, I guess you called it porous paving occurs, and can you explain exactly what that is a little bit? I'm assuming it allows water to go into the ground and not run off.
Sure, it's, it's, water will run off. It basically allows water during the minor events, so the two-year event, the technical, will saturate in the ground, and that allows the runoff to, from any any materials picked up, fertilizers, whatever, will, will be washed through the system so that we don't, we, basically, it's a level of water quality. We just thought it softens the backyards rather than the concrete pavement. Softens the backyards, allows for a little bit more of a, of a residential fill back there. And it does direct water and helps, directs water and pure, and water quality functions.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Gay.
Yes, thank you. Question, I believe, for the city staff, possibly the developer too. I'm looking at the there's only one condition to approval on the last page. I'm wondering if the letter of, letter of map revision to FEMA should be one of the contingencies for approval. Because he said he supplied a couple of weeks ago, and I suspect FEMA is not the fastest-moving organization.
Yes, and that is in our, in our comments on the, on the cover page of our, of our review for this is that all floodplain-related issues must be resolved before final approval will be granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Gay, I'm sorry, was that it?
That is it. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of general questions. The first one is just a clarification on site triangles. Can't believe I'm bringing this up, but I'm questioning the trees at the entrance. Are those trees because of the limb height not a concern for site triangles, or is that a problem? Both entrances.
Yeah, so the southeast entrance, being the fire entrance, that's an emergency access only, the one on the, on the Fifty-Eighth. So that's a little bit of a different situation. The ones on the north, on the Miller Street, those have been reviewed. those have been reviewed, and there was no concern raised by our landscape architect. But, trees can be located within the site triangle as long as they are clear from three feet to eight feet. So, that's another consideration.
Sounds like that's under control, I just thought I'd bring that one up. The other piece is a small question. I think I understand why you couldn't do it, but I would have loved to have seen a sidewalk that comes from the play lawn out to 58. I'm assuming you can't do that because of the stormwater inlet that's right there. Is that correct?
You're talking about sidewalks from the...
From the play lawn area, so the center courtyard that's...
Well, yeah, what we've done in the far-left one is we've eliminated that because that's the water quality and the inlet, and the box coverets that are existing there. But, all the other three courtyards have sidewalks to the street, to 58.
Okay, I can, go ahead.
Just, sorry, just a quick note too. It is a little bit out of the way, but the walkway along the parking row on that side does extend down onto the street. So, while it's not as direct, it's, they don't have to walk all the way down and around. It's still relatively close.
Okay. My concern was for the connectivity, but I see your point there that you're not far away from it, okay? All right. Quick question about the community garden. I've seen these things go in before and be wonderful, and I've seen them also really not do much. And it all depends on access to water. Is there some irrigation or spigot that is planned there for the community garden?
Sure, there's irrigation throughout the site in that area as well. We also plan to have the HOA contract with a landscape company, or whatever you want to call it, to maintain these gardens. Because on other sites that we've seen throughout the town, they can become weedy and that sort of stuff. So, even though the neighbors in the community will be able to grow their own plants, there will be a, sort of a guy drops by once a week to make sure that everything's tidy and clean. And that'll be under control of the HOA.
Sounds good, would highly recommend that the HOA, or whoever's going to be controlling the gardens overall, figure out a way to manage who has control over what plot. That's another thing that I've seen these things fail at, when they're just sort of a space and people occupy them or don't. Just a suggestion there. The last question I have is sort of two parts that has to do with the HOA. So, I really like the idea of the front-facing properties facing 58. One thing that I think might be worth considering, most people in their front yards, they want to kind of dress it up, put some shrubs, or do something with that property. And I understand there's an HOA here that's going to be maintaining landscape. May want to think about buffering, or the more sort of residential typology, like more like single-family detached residential, even though this isn't that. As you front 58th, it might make it feel a little bit more like the front yard, rather than, I think it's basically a large detention area. Just to consider it.
Yeah, the front are lawn, or rain gardens actually. So, they'll look like plantings and that sort of stuff. You won't know there for water quality. This will be manicured lawn. We are unable to put a lot of trees in this area because of the underground pipes. There's a sanitary sewer and a stormwater sewer through there.
Okay, I guess that would be my other comment, is if you can't do much else, you really want some buffering with trees. And I see you have that sanitary sewer line, or storm line. Okay, I understand that. I guess the buffering from 58th would probably be ideal if you can't do it. I understand the argument. And that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Connell?
My comment would, was, pardon me, in part of a question, but the direction and the information about the homeowners association answered that, and that, pardon me, it would be homeowners association associated with the green area and monitoring, different things like that. So, and the other questions I had, I had one other one, and that was already addressed. So, thank you.
Yeah, on the HOA, we also plan to have the HOA, and this is somewhat unusual, but maintain the buildings, the exterior of the buildings. So, that one is not, you know, no paint on the building after three years or something. The HOA will maintain and paint the buildings on the exterior.
Great, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Ms. Connell, did you have more discussion?
It was answered, he answered everything that I was thinking about, about the homeowners association, just adding that.
Great, thank you. Mr. McGee, would you care to make a motion?
I can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well, I move that DA 2019-0134, cottages at Ralston Fields Preliminary Development Plan, located at 5810 Miller Street, be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the condition stated in the staff report, item one, page eight. This motion is based upon the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages seven and eight of the staff report.
Thank you very much. The motion is for approval, any discussion of this motion? Mr. Hanon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be supporting this motion. If I could raise my hand twice and vote for it twice, or three or four times, I would. This is a wonderful development. It's an area that has been kind of rundown in Arvada for years, and seeing this go here is great. More importantly, though, is the plan for this. The middle, filling in that hole and affordable. We've been asking for affordable for a long time, and now we have it. And I will definitely be voting for this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar comments to Commissioner Hanon. I think the developer has done an excellent job of working with this site that for 65 years has sat vacant for many reasons that he spoke about. Very creative, you know, there's modifications that they're asking for, but I think they're reasonable, considering we get this new type of housing. I think the architecture is quite good. I like the pet porches and the balconies that they've added. I just think there's a lot of positives, and I will be supporting this as well.
Great, thank you. Mr. Griffith, and then I'll get to you, Ms. Connell.
No problem.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I echo the same comments. I wanted to say to the applicant that I especially appreciated the framing of the sort of the dilemma, the issue with affordable housing, and really kind of helping paint that picture with some data. That rigor really helps whenever we're reviewing the context of a project like this. Good project, I will be supporting, thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Connell?
Yes, I will also be supporting because this, of all the items that they have included, in not so much amenities, but items that will attract people of different ages, and also help for persons who might not be able to afford an extreme-type house.
Great, thank you, Ms. Connell. If there's no further comment, I will call the roll. Mr. Griffith?
Aye.
Ms. Connell? Ms. Connell, get unmute.
I didn't want to make noises while they were voting. I support aye, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hanon?
Aye and aye again.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Gay?
Aye.
And I am an yes as well, so that is six yeses and zero nos with Mr. McCarron absent. That motion passes, and we will be recommending that to City Council for approval. Thank you so much for coming out and being with us tonight. All right, everybody doing okay? Anybody need to stretch before we get going? We get two more cases to hear tonight, so I don't want anybody to get a thing, whatever that might be. All right. The next item on our agenda is CP 202003, Resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado to amend the Arvada Comprehensive Plan 2014 to incorporate revisions related to the Land Development Code update and associated remapping. Staff, are there any additional, staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
If you, if you'd like, we can certainly take both of these at the same time.
The presentation is geared with both pieces together.
That sounds outstanding, and quickly. So, we'll hear both, and I probably need to tell everybody what we're hearing. So, we're going to hear CP 2020-03, and a remapping a section of West Alcare Street and north of West 80th on the City of Arvada zoning map, dated April 20th, 2020, in conjunction with the Land Development Code 2020 and Comprehensive Plan.
Great. In terms of publication, the city did publish the notice, and that's the only notice that's required for this type of case. There are two cases to talk about here, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the zoning map remapping of the northwest area. This is the phase two of the remapping and Comprehensive Plan updates. Go ahead, next slide, please. And we separated these two pieces out simply to provide additional opportunity for comment and discussions with folks in the northwest area of the city. And to that effect, we did have a neighborhood meeting on February 18th specifically for this set of recommendations. And we had about 25 residents and property owners attend that meeting to really thoroughly discuss the modifications that were proposed for these areas. Next slide, please. So, for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and the zoning follows very closely, but this is a map just showing the proposed changes to the Comprehensive Plan. And you'll notice one significant change is in the center of the Candellas neighborhood, where there's a chunk of property being proposed to have a comp plan change from mixed-use and commercial to suburban residential. That was vetted heavily with the community and the developer. And one of the reasons why we did have a separate neighborhood meeting to talk about these changes, to really reflect the reality of what's occurring in the northwest area of the city. So, next slide, please. And here's where you can see the proposed comp plan map for that area. The large mixed-use area is now shown, proposed to be suburban residential, consistent with the kind of updated plans that the developer has, and that, again, the discussions took place with the community. You'll notice there's a few other minor changes, but that is the most significant change for the comp plan update. Next slide, please. And then for the zoning map, you'll essentially see that that follows through on the proposed zoning for that area, with R6 proposed for that chunk of property. The vast majority of the Candellas project will remain in PUD zoning. And then there's a few other changes with some general commercial, kind of on the edges of the Candellas area, and some additional mixed-use suburban along the Indiana corridor. We did receive two letters as part of this review. One letter was just simply broadly in support of the remapping efforts and the comp plan change. The other one is from Cimarron Commercial, as they requested a rezoning, or a remapping of a parcel from PUD to CG. And that is primarily because the city is actually buying the piece of property, and we're going to be constructing a water tank on the site. And so, the city concurs with the request to recommend a CG zone for that parcel. The parcel does not have an address, so if you choose to add that to your recommendation, the parcel number is 20-212-02-002. And with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much. We don't have any members of the public present, so I'll close the public input portion of the hearing and invite questions and comments from members of the planning commission. Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Rob, a little bit more about that, the modification that you spoke about, that's really the biggest one. And where deleting some commercial and mixed-use, I'm sure most commissioners would say, we don't usually like to do that. Can you explain a little bit more? Is it just that there's going to be enough commercial land up there, and that there's more land needed for housing in Candellas?
Yes, so the developer and the city have been involved in looking at this for quite a while. And there was a study done by the University of Colorado looking at the economics of this area and the commercial development. And through that study, it was determined that, you know, market conditions have changed over the past few years. And retail is not as big of a driver as it once was, and that this was not necessarily a location where we might see a significant amount of office space. So, the proposal is to redistribute some of that commercial to where it makes sense to serve the Candellas community and kind of the whole entire northwest area. And we are seeing a lot of commercial development take place on Indiana, which is an arterial street, and it makes sense for it to be located there, versus kind of the interior of the site. It was also, you know, some of the discussion was around the Northwest Parkway and what kind of benefit that might provide for commercial development. But ultimately, we've seen the commercial and office development really kind of congregate in Broomfield and the Interlochen area. And the market just isn't here to pull development, that type of development down to this location. So, with that in mind, we did evaluate the need for potentially more residential development in the area. And that will help support the commercial that will remain. And with this, we hope we've struck the balance between the community serving commercials that will be available and the community that's necessary to support that commercial development.
So, one last question. Any, during those discussions with the Metropolitan Authority out there, the Jefferson Center, I guess, any thought to buffering those single-family homes with high-density, you know, R24 residential right along the corridor, the Jefferson Parkway corridor, to kind of be a buffer between big, single-family homes and the proposed Parkway?
Yeah, Josie, if you could go back to the map?
I know you added some R24 on the south side of the corridor.
Yes, and there's also some additional areas that are, well, they're remaining PUD zoning, but they also can accommodate higher-density development. Particularly, there's a kind of a triangular piece of property that's south of the Parkway near Highway 72 and Welton Reservoir, where that can accommodate some high-density development. And within the R6 area, conceptually, they are looking at a mix of product types. So, there will be some townhome develop, or it's proposed that there would be some townhome development, some duplex development, as well as single-family homes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Chair. Opted for the physical hand raise. Just a question about... Just a question about the economic study that you said was done, and I guess that was an economic modeling of it. Was there any consideration given to where there may be service deficits for some of the residents in the Candelas area? They'll be sort of forced to travel, continue to travel outside of the neighborhood they live in so they can find these services elsewhere, and that could potentially add to traffic congestion?
Ryan may want to address some of that. He was more integral to that study than I was.
Yeah, thank you Commissioners. So I was involved in the studies that hired the Weed School of Business to kind of look at these economic models. And Rob is correct in all the things that were said, but the truth of the matter is, is making this change is not necessarily intended to make commercial go away. It's actually there to spur commercial. The land use maps that were there previously had anticipated probably an overabundance of commercial that's not viable in market conditions. And so, and the study looked at, you know, 25 years out and the growth patterns and those types of things. And so in the current model, it had a minimum of 7.2 million square feet of commercial that was required to be built. However, what the model showed is that only 1.5, this area based on its current density and even future density could only support 1.5 million square feet of commercial. And so the concern was, is because of the thinning residential and the fact that it was buffered by rocky flats on the north, the mountains and open space on the west, that there was a little opportunity to add the types of density that was needed in order to actually make that 1.5 million square feet come to fruition. And so it, the plan to make the change was less about not widening commercial. It's that the commercial wasn't going to be able to come for a variety of reasons, which I can go into more detail here in a second. And really spur knowing that we could probably get more of that 1.5 million square feet of commercial if we were able to add density, and meaning residential. It does strike a balance, and this goes back to Mr. McGee's or Commissioner McGee's question of the community members that are out there said, "We're okay with this, but we want something that is similar to what we are used to," which is why not a lot of the higher density is being proposed. That they were comfortable, but they were comfortable with a similar land use pattern to what's existing.
And I appreciate that. That helps a lot, I guess. I, to kind of tie it up in a bow, I want to make sure I understand this properly. So the, the commercial allocations that were considered earlier in the planning of Candelas for commercial and the ratio with residential dense or not didn't quite happen in that initial sort of, it wasn't built out the way it was envisioned. So the density for the residential isn't there to support the originally envisioned commercial. Is that accurate?
That is. There's an additional component which gets into the weeds a little bit, but because so much commercial was anticipated, we require as the city that infrastructure be built to meet its finer, final build-out. And so there are issues about that Candelas Parkway, for example, would have been, needed to be widened to three lanes on each side if we kept consistent with the resident, or the commercial growth patterns that we were anticipating. And to turn Candelas Parkway, which is already a fairly significant Parkway, into a six-lane road based on, you know, a quarter of the size of the Denver Tech Center, it became out of scale of what was a residential suburban neighborhood. And so we were struggling with the infrastructure that we were requiring versus the future land use plan and how all those things work together. So the traffic actually reduces significantly by adding residential versus what was anticipated or required by the previous commercial requirements.
Got it. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gay?
Thank you Chairman. One question. I see the two written communications regarding the rezoning that we're just discussing. Is this the sum total of the written communications? I'm really surprised there's not more input.
Yeah, those are the only comments we did receive. We, as mentioned, we spent a lot of time meeting with folks and talking about the changes and having the open house up in that area particularly. But just as a general rule, we had a lot of public input during the entire Land Development Code process. And so we had a chance to take a lot of those things into consideration and a lot of those comments into consideration long before this final piece was put in place.
Sure, sure. Thanks for clarifying, but I'm still a little surprised, but thank you. That's all, that's my only question.
Thank you. Ms. Connell?
Yes, my comment would be, it's a practical approach rather than just putting the items out there. And isn't there something about Parkway around this, the city that was going to connect with that area? So this is a practical approach to build what can be built based on situations.
Thank you, Ms. Connell. All right. If there's no further discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. McGee, would you like to make a motion?
I can make the motion. And how do we want to handle this single parcel that we're going to approve, the change as an amendment to this motion?
There's no change, right? We're approving, we're approving as presented to us, correct?
Well, the comp plan, yes. There's no change that's necessary for the comp plan. For the zoning piece, you would need to recommend that change for the zoning piece.
Yeah, so Mr. McGee, why don't you make both motions for the comp plan, just as written? And then if somebody wants to give you the words for the motion, I suspect we can just do that as part of the motion rather than doing an amendment.
Okay, so this is, so I move that CP 2020-003, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado to amend the Arvada Comprehensive Plan 2014 to incorporate revisions related to the Land Development Code update and associated remapping, be recommended to City Council for approval subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, Item 1, Pages 1 and 2. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on Pages 1 and 2 of the staff report.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Any discussion of the motion? No. You know, I don't know if it's appropriate here or the next one, but I am very appreciative of the staff and the work that they've put in. And I know we had a couple of volunteers from our Planning Commission that have given us a lot of time to get us to this point. And, you know, it's worth a cup of coffee if you put three, three or four bucks with it, but my appreciation certainly goes with all the hard work that you've done. So given that, Mr. Griffith?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Connell?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Hannan?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Gay?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so that's six yeses and zero nos with Mr. McCarron absent. And you guys got to hear the front doorbell. Go ahead, Mr. McGee.
The next motion?
Yes, please.
All right. So I move that remapping a section of west of Alcare Street and north of West 80th Avenue on the City of Arvada zoning map dated June 1st, 2020 in conjunction with the Land Development Code 2020 and Comprehensive Plan, be recommended to City Council for approval subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, Item 1, Page 3. This motion is based upon the findings of fact and approval criteria on Page 3 of the staff report.
Great, thank you. And that includes the remap of that?
That parcel?
That parcel. Is that correct?
It would be great if that was part of the motion, and I can give you the parcel number one more time.
Well, I have the parcel number. I took that down. What, how do you want me to?
Yeah, I just want to say that you recommend that that parcel be remapped to CG as part of the motion.
Yeah, I'm sure Ms. Hutchinson will finesse.
All right, I think I know, to CG. So as a part of that motion, I move that parcel number 20-212-02-002 be modified to zoning District CG.
All right. The motion is for approval. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Griffith?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to, to say, well, I'll be supporting this motion. There's an interesting example here. It's sort of a microcosm of something that happens all over with planning where residents want access to amenities and facilities and all sorts of commercial entities. But at the same time, single-family detached homes want to see more of that. And they end up basically putting themselves into a situation where density is challenged from a residential perspective. And at the same time, that hurts the ability for commercial properties to develop. So it seems to me that it's worth noting that in this situation, we're kind of seeing the result, what looks like the result of adversity to higher density in a suburban area leading to a commercial not being as viable. So just something I think we should take note of.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Griffith?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Connell? Ms. Connell?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Hannan?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Gay?
Aye.
And I am yes as well, so we have six yeses and zero nos. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. It's, this has been a little challenging. Rob, any other items?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Your next meeting will be on June 2nd, and we do have two cases in the Candelas area on that agenda.
All right. As I said before, I will be hanging out with my wife. That's our 25th anniversary on June 2nd. So Mr. Griffith will have the comms, so good luck. And anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I wonder if I could make a couple of requests to city staff. I will defer to you if they're appropriate for them to take on, but the first request would be, I'd like to have a new list of commission members. We have a new commissioner, Commissioner Gay. It'd be good to have his contact information. We've got new city staff, and so it'd be nice to have a sheet like we've had in the past that lists our commission members and city staff that are supporting the commission and their numbers that we can reach them at. So that'd be the first request. A second request would be to have a calendar of our scheduled meetings through 2020. Nice to have that on one sheet so that we can plan events, plan activities around these meetings. And then I just have a question as to whether with our June 2nd meeting, the packet that we get, if we want to have it be a pickup of materials that we want to return to city staff as well. So a drop-off and a pickup, but, Mr. Chairman, I will defer to you if you believe these are.
Well, thanks, Mr. McGee. Rob, or Ryan, I don't care who. What do you guys think about, can you get us a list of, of planning commissioners and our?
Absolutely.
Everybody's contacts?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, happy to do that. Happy to do the calendar as well, of course.
And, you know, we do have new staff members joining us, so maybe just a roster of, you know?
Absolutely.
Who's who's, so when we see these names, it's a little bit less personal than when we're all in the same building, so.
Absolutely.
Good deal. Yep, good deal. Thanks, Mr. McGee.
Well, in terms of drop-off, I, we're not 100% sure whether City Hall is going to be open again on, by June 2nd to the public. So we were planning on dropping off packets by courier the same way we did it this time. We don't necessarily need those packets back. So, I mean, I think that unless something changes, I, well, I'm 100% confident that City Hall is not going to be open before June 1st for you to come pick up your packet. So I would assume that it's going to be done by courier and then not necessarily needing those back as we continue to get back to an in-person setting.
Could you guys drop my packet anyway? I know I'm not going to be here, but I'd probably like to read it.
Yes.
My, all my neighbors thought I was being served. It was pretty fun.
Well, I'm not going to say what I was going to say.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be the first time I'd been served. All right, so Mr. Griffith?
Thank you Chair. My wife also thought that I was being served when I walked inside. She said, "They just serve you some sort of a thing." Anyway, I just wanted to say thanks to the staff for putting this together. You know, a lot of weird things going on for everybody and all their individual situations right now. Putting something like this together cannot be easy, but it felt pretty easy for me, and I'm sure the rest of my commissioners would agree and appreciate all the lengths that staff went through to make this possible at all, let alone easy. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, including courier service and everything to get, get the packets out to us. Very appreciated.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Ms. Connell, one more thing.
Just to follow up, to say thank you to the staff and thank you to the city in this unique situations and time. And I appreciate the delivery. I still have that brown packet from the last time, so I'll just go ahead and keep it for posterity unless we decide what to do with it. And thank you so much for all the time people have applied to this.
Absolutely. All right. Rob, anything else for us tonight?
Nope, I think we are done.
Good deal. Then we're adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great evening. Be safe, be well.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary, Kyo.
Thank you.